And forklift redesigns, which would still have you dealing with all their technology. We looked at potentials for that in that report. And it became evident that in order to solve the problems the county is seeing now, you need to roll into a different kind of system. So the needs analysis tasks two, this was task one, task two through five are what we just completed. And that's what this presentation is about. So task two was compile data, which we did by talking to the users in the system. Establish system alternatives was task three. In other words, where, what are the possibilities that we can look at to potentially improve the performance and the capabilities of the county's current system? Develop a plan for an upgrade was task four. And then provide the report and this presentation is task five. So compiling data, we actually looked at radio coverage. And this, these are near term issues that we've identified. Radio coverage is by far at the top of the list. Radio coverage is very inadequate in the county. And I can go into a lot more detail on that. And we'll have a slide later that illustrates that. Equipment obsolescence is another issue that the county is dealing with right now. We'll go into a little more detail in that. And interoperability is, is a concern both internally within the structure of the county and its constituent agencies, as well as externally with some of your neighboring counties, the state, some other agencies. And we'll talk about a definition of interoperability and what exactly you have and don't have in that regard. From the obsolescence perspective, the infrastructure as well as the user radios, and we make that separation typically, the infrastructure being the towers, the electronics that are in the shelters at the base of the towers, the back room electronics wherever they may be located, whether it's here, whether it's at the sheriff's dispatch center. All of those are referred to as infrastructure. So in this slide, we're looking at both the infrastructure and the user radios, the vehicular and portable radios that they carry on their belts. They've either reached or are rapidly reaching their designated end of life. And we define that in two terms. Number one, when does the manufacturer discontinue providing that model of radio? In other words, you can't buy it anymore. And secondly, when does the manufacturer stop supporting that radio? In other words, providing service, manufacturing spare parts, selling spare parts for it. And this is not new to the system that you have. This has been ongoing for decades. And folks with older systems than yours who have not upgraded find themselves going to eBay to buy spare parts for their system. And they take their chances, whether or not they're working or whether it's exactly what they expect to be given, they go to eBay or some other such outlet. So in this case, the county is bumping up against both of those obsolescence indicators. Number one, the end of life and number two, end of support. The radio system, the site system equipment, the infrastructure equipment is 10 or more years old and in the county, in the fires instance, more than that. Agency radios are five to seven years old. And typically that is the life expectancy that we find for these radios from a planning perspective. Some of them will work longer than that. Many of them will work longer than that. Some of them will fail prior to that. But generally we use five and seven years. Five for the portable radios because they take, they can be dropped, they can be thrown into a vehicle for whatever purposes. Vehicular radios take less abuse and typically we look at seven years as a life expectancy for those radios. It's not absolutely necessary that they be replaced when the clock hits year seven, but it is necessary to recognize that beyond year seven, the risk starts to increase that something would happen with those. We mentioned coverage. Coverage is the single most deficient area in the county's current systems. You can see in this slide, two columns. On the left is law enforcement, on the right is fire and EMS. And we break this down by the ability of at the top portable radios and at the bottom mobile radios. And the ability of a portable radio to receive in the street, meaning they're receiving a signal from the tower to the portable radio, generally is best, better than the opposite direction from the portable radio to the tower. In other words, a user is answering to the tower. You can see the percentages there in street at 75% for law enforcement and 88% for fire and EMS. When we roll into a 60B building, which is a typical residential building or a very lightly constructed commercial building, then it drops further because as the radio signal travels from free air through the building exterior and into the building, it's attenuated somewhat. The building absorbs or blocks the radio signal to an extent. So those percentages that we looked at in line one have reduced somewhat in a 60B building. Again, this is outbound from the tower to the user radio. The next two lines, lines four, three and four are the other direction. The users in the street, the portable radio operators in the street or in buildings transmitting in to the towers, from the, from the user to the towers. And we're looking at in the street, sheriff is showing only 18% of the county area is covered in a reliable manner. 52% for fire EMS portables from the unit to the tower. When you roll into a 60B building, a residential or verlink constructed, that is, that actually drops to 9% for, for the sheriff's department and 30% for fire. Obviously not a very tenable approach at this stage.
What was your definition of reliable transmission?
There, it's, it's dealt with in terms of percentage. What we look for is for public safety, a 95-95, which means 95% of the county area, this is our target, this is the goal for public safety radio system. 95% of the county area at, and 95% of the time. So if you go to a particular location, then you should have coverage there. 95 keyups out of 100 keyups. Atmospherics will deal with that, will affect that at times. Weather leaves around the trees will affect that at times, whether there happens to be a passing truck at any given instant. But generally we look at trying to attain a 95% reliability factor for that. And obviously as much of the county geographic landmass that can be covered, a typical target is 95%. Only because as you get above that, then all of a sudden the cost to benefit ratio starts to go askew. You pay lots more money for a relatively little improvement. And 100% is, I've never seen any system that has 100% because there's always some place that for whatever reason, terrain shadowing, a gully or whatever doesn't have it. So we target 95-95. You can see with the mobile radios, the, the coverage is pretty good. From the county area covered for sheriff, from the tower to the mobile radio, which has an external antenna, it's a better antenna than what's on the portable. It has the metal ground plane of the vehicle and, and it's always in street, obviously, never inside a building. 91% of the county is covered for that. 68% is covered for the other way, from the vehicle to the tower. And then because fire has three towers and sheriff only has one, fire is much better. 99% from the tower to the fire vehicle and from the fire vehicle to the tower, 95%.
Question for you. The area covered, did you do any percentages based on dense population versus sparse population areas?
We did not, we can't. We have that capability, but we, what we looked at was the ability to react to any incident that, that comes up. In fact, interesting point because typically the vendors, when, when you get to the point where you're building a system, one of the things the vendors have to do is agree upon the coverage testing methodology. And what they typically try to do is to test only where there are roads, only where there are easily accessible areas. When in reality, that is a parameter that's not always the case for the responders when they go into the field. It's not always in roads. They may have to go onto private property. There may be instances of fire or, or law enforcement activity in wooded areas and things like that. So we generally approach it from the entire perspective. But if there's a particular interest in one particular area, we can draw a polygon around that and then the program is smart enough to.
Well, I know that the east end of the county, especially the northern section of the Route Three area, you have no coverage.
Right, right.
And when you take a percentage of the county that's not covered, that's one of the higher population areas as well as call volume areas due to businesses as well, so.
Now, we did look at some of that in the task one with, which started out as a lake of the woods coverage area task. And it sort of expanded during the course of the project. It became evident that it didn't really make sense to just limit that to lake of the woods. Let's look at the entire county. It was minimal additional work. So we did identify the fact that there was very little coverage in the three and 20 area, that general area.
Okay.
The problem was that the lake of the woods tower sits down geographically. The surrounding land is higher in, in relation to the tower. So in the lake of the woods area, that tower does well, but outside of the lake of the woods area, the surrounding land limits the ability of the signal from the lake of the woods tower to get there. And sheriff in particular, they're not even using lake of the woods tower. They're using Clark Mountain. So that has to go all the way from Clark Mountain to that area. So we had a pretty detailed analysis of that, that particular area. This is the only coverage slide that we've put in here. We have a bunch of them in the report. And if we need to look at some of those after our last slide here, I've put some of those slides. But this indicates the coverage area of the sheriff. And you can see that the purple area in here is the 18% in street. And the green area is the 9% in, in 60B buildings. On the slide, the other slide, it said 8%. It was actually eight in a decimal. We rounded up a decimal, decimal. I mean, the communications were, we rounded up to, to 9% here. But you can see what the sheriff's office is contending with, with transmission from portable radios. Of course, the mobile is a little better, but, but portables here are, are a particular Internal interoperability, again, the, the ability to interoperate between agencies within the county. And we have definitions here of what the federal government defines interoperability as. And all interoperability thrust, which is a main thrust right now, really started around 9/11. One of the big issues on 9/11 was the fact that in the New York area and in the Washington DC area, we're depending on, there were many agencies who were completely unable to communicate with their adjacent agencies. They would be on the same incident at the same location, but they had to use runners. They had to use folks who would basically copy things down and carry it to someone else. So the federal government started funding a lot of interoperability grants to bring that up. And it still is a thrust. To get grant funding now, almost universally it requires a P25 solution, which is the standard for public safety radio. I say standard, it's, it's a guideline, but a universally accepted guideline. It's, it's not a mandated standard, but it is a mandated standard if you're looking for grant funding, for instance. And there is grant funding available, but for P25 systems, you get added points if you look at it as a regional system, again, for the interoperability perspective. So at this point, internal interoperability. Fire EMS communicate well with one another. Fire EMS don't communicate with sheriff, don't have that capability unless they carry besides their own radio, the sheriff radio, two incompatible technologies. Sheriff on motor turbo, the fire EMS folks on a conventional analog system, motor turbo being controlled. Law enforcement, similarly. The law enforcement agencies have common channels that they can interoperate on, but they're not able to interoperate, not without a lot of user switching and configuring of their radios, the ability to contact fire in a real time method. And as you'll notice in the first bullet item here, it talks about communicate by radio with other county agencies on demand and in real time. And that's wording right out of the federal government, Department of Homeland Security. Fire EMS and law enforcement don't share channels for direct communication between each other because they don't have the same technologies. And most of all, the file and final bullet, Public Schools, Lake of the Woods Security and Gordonville Public Works don't have any county interoperability. So they're isolated from anything that happens here.
Why is Gordonville Public Works considered as a part of a public safety?
Well, we looked at potential users and when they would have to interoperate with someone. Public Works, whether it's someone that's dealing with water related issues, a water main break or something like that, that would form a traffic issue where fire might respond and police might respond.
So you didn't, you didn't look at anything with regard to the county or any other areas' public works?
Is it correct? There is a correction, I'm sorry for that, I missed that in review. Town, the town of Orange and the county of Orange Public Works are both brought in and we did activate information.
Okay, all right. So we were looking at all public works, not just Gordonville?
Correct.
We identified all potential users of what a unified system would be.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
No, I just, I just wondered why it was one particular area, but if you, if you're looking at public works across the area, that's fine.
So again, that's internal interoperability within the county and agencies that are within the county. External interoperability, similar definition, communicate by radio with jurisdictions and state agencies on demand and in real time. The radio interoperability system is a system that sits in the dispatch center. It basically is a computer system that allows, that connects the dispatch center to other dispatch center. So Nikki and her folks can connect to the state police dispatch center or to Alamo County's dispatch center from their computer and have relatively cumbersome interoperability that way, but not radio interoperability, direct radio to radio to facilitate ongoing incident. There's an effort underway to look at regional interoperability right now. We refer to that as the Central Piedmont Public Safety Communications Committee. And that entire effort was spearheaded by Mr. David, who got his counterparts from six jurisdictions, six individual counties, including Orange, together to start talking about what makes sense in the future to solve the external interoperability project. That's in a nascent form right now. So that effort continues, but it's a, an effort that has a long way to go. It's a good start and it's moving in the right direction, but, but it's not prepared to solve anything at this point. It's still, a lot of the, the learning curve is still pretty high and the discussions have, have occurred generally this calendar year. I think you had a couple of meetings maybe prior to 2015, but generally this calendar.
Wayne, I think where we are is the number of Louisa and Orange needed to get through a needs assessment to figure out what we had and what we may need. Fluvana has actually purchased the system.
Right.
Charlottesville, Alamo, UVA are going through an expansion or an update of their system. And then Green and Madison are still, they're, they haven't even started a process to figure out what, what their needs may be. So I think part of it was Louisa and Orange just to kind of figure out, get this process done before we may reconvene everybody. So I think we know more, we will know more now getting back together than we did back at the beginning of the year.
Are there any incentives or any programs related to interoperability throughout the state? Do they, does the state have any, any requirements along those lines?
They have listed guidelines for interoperability. They have listed desirable approaches for interoperability. They have not mandated specific interoperability requirements, but they are tying state funding for grants and that sort of thing to regional interoperability. You have a higher likelihood of receiving grant funding if you can show a regional effort. And of course, P25 is almost, I'm not aware of any grants right now that are addressing anything except P25 systems, but.
But I'm thinking, I'm thinking of the kind of situation that we had at 9/11 where some of our troops went up to the DC area to deal with problems in Northern Virginia. And is the state looking at anything like a big, big problem in Richmond that might require resources from outside that regional area?
There are several solutions that have been put in place since 9/11. And in, in addition to those solutions, the state maintains a radio cache where radios are stockpiled for distribution to a particular agency for a particular incident or event.
So that's how they're doing it?
That's, that's one of the ways. But a lot of that is, is less on the state level and more on the local level. The National Capital Region, because they were so affected on 9/11, they had a tremendous effort over the ensuing years. They are very interconnected, very coordinated now. So somebody from, from Georgia's County, Maryland, abutting Washington DC to the east, would be able to easily interoperate with and, and respond to an incident with and work the incident with somebody from Manassas or, or another agency. So they've established, they've put in place procedures that facilitate all of that. But that was all a local initiative. And they used grant funding for some of it, but it was a lot of man hours from the perspective of the, the agencies in the National Capital Region. I believe that goes down as far as Stafford County in the Fredericksburg area. It is considered the National Capital Region for, for this particular purpose. And then of course into Eastern Maryland, I'm sorry, into Maryland to the east of DC and then the Western DC suburbs, Maryland to the north of DC. So all of that is very coordinated there. There isn't a similar system in Richmond, although right now Richmond is bordered on the south by Chesterfield County and on the north by Henrico County. To the north of that is Hanover County and those four agencies play closely together. In 2000, Henrico, actually I think it was in 98 maybe, Hurricane Floyd, Henrico activated their system while Richmond and Chesterfield were in the, in the project to deploy their own system. And Henrico was using their system brain, if you will, core, and we'll talk about that a little bit here, to host.
Okay, so it was still another regional though, as opposed to statewide?
Yes, yes, just regional. So right now they're in a procurement. They expect it to be about a $220 million procurement for those four agencies. And at this point, I believe they are still looking at the proposal, the single proposal that they see.
All right.
They're dealing with that. So solutions we've identified, or solution alternatives we've identified, we looked at six individual approaches. The six are listed here and I won't go through all of them, but any that you see here that deal with 800 megahertz, we were able to eliminate relatively quickly, primarily because the cost that's involved. And those would be numbers one and three here. The cost involved is much higher than the others because at 800 megahertz, you need more tower sites to cover the same area as you would by using a lower frequency. VHF is in the 150 megahertz range as opposed to 800 megahertz here. UHF is in the 460 megahertz range. So as you go up in frequency, you have to add sites in intermediate areas to cover the same thing, that fewer sites would be necessary at a lower frequency. So we were, and I want to say, and I would have to look back, I'd have it off the top of my head, I'd have to look back into the, into the study, but I want to say that it required 10 sites, if I recall correctly, for an 800 megahertz system. So in order to adequately cover Orange County at 800 megahertz, you would need 10 sites, whereas at VHF, you need five sites. And those sites, of course, are not just the tower and the shelter and the generator and the unirruptible power supply, but it's all the electronics to provide the radio system and the control system and everything. So each of those sites, you multiply by the number of sites and of course, cost goes up quite a bit. So we looked at, at each of these. And number six was the Central Piedmont issue that we talked about a little bit ago. And that's just too early in its process to be a, to be a real alternative for Orange County with the state, the county communication system. So we came up with the possibility of three viable and practicable alternatives. Number one is replace the radio system with a standard standalone P25 system. So you would be the complete owner of a Orange County P25 system. You would implement interoperability with your neighboring agencies based on that. But with a five site P25 system, you would have very good coverage throughout the, the county area and.
If we, if we went with alternative one, would we improve the, the coverage very much?
Oh, yes.
Just, just going to the 25?
Going to P25 plus this is predicated upon having five radio sites.
Okay.
Whereas right now sheriff has one, fire has.
You still need to go to five in both cases?
Yes.
Alternative one and two, all right.
Yes. In fact, all of these are, are based on, on five sites. Alternative three, build a five site P25 VHF system in Orange County and attach it to Fluvana County's system. As Mr. David mentioned, Fluvana County is engaged in a project right now. In fact, on the 15th of December, so two weeks about, we head to Schaumburg, Illinois, Motorola's factory. And we'll actually see the system set up there and run it through all its testing to verify that in the factory environment, the system works exactly as we expect it to work. When we pass that test, then, when Motorola passes that test, then the county will sign off and say, okay, ship to the field. The county is still dealing with site acquisition, frequency acquisition, but the system is already in manufacturing and staging will occur in two weeks. So that project is scheduled to conclude in January of 2017. That's when they expect to be completed with the project. They expect to go live with the system probably in the fall of 2016, just to give you a timeframe there. Now, they don't directly, but Orange County, but the benefit of joining the Fluvana County system is they've already purchased a core. system is they've already, uh, purchased a core, the main brain for the system. That core is sized suitably to also serve as the core for Orange County. And that is the single most expensive piece in the radio system. So if you were to join them, you would be able to reside on their core. They would be able to host your system, um, and thereby, uh, allowing you not to have to purchase the core. Um...
And then...
And coincidentally, uh, we also are about the same point as you are with Louisa County. In fact, I present to their board next week. Um, we've done a study for them. Uh, I present to their board next week. They should have traction at this point. Uh, they have funding for their system. And, uh, we looked at, uh, a third alternative where we would, uh, where Orange County would put in the system whether or not it's a cooperative procurement with, uh, with Louisa. And of course, a cooperative procurement, you would have the economy of scale. Um, you might have the benefit of, uh, of putting towers along the border that would serve both Louisa and, uh, Orange County, thereby eliminating the total number of towers and reducing costs for both agencies. But, um, it also would allow Orange and Louisa, if you decide to go that route, to put in your own core and then attach that to Fluvana. And now both Fluvana, uh, all three, Fluvana, Louisa, and Orange have geographically redundant cores. So if, for whatever reason, a massive fire hit Fluvana's, Fluvana would operate off of yours. If a massive fire hit yours, your system doesn't go down into a fallback mode. It continues to operate, um, with very, very minimal, we're talking minutes of interruption, continue to operate by switching to the Fluvana core. So, um...
Wayne, if I could, could add about this, the ideas of, of sharing and things. Um, my colleagues Steve Nichols and Christian Goodwin, at our level, have certainly talked about, I've reported back to you, that those conversations, they'll, certainly their boards have not made any decisions. I want to manage some, some expectations. We see this as a technical, uh, alter, a technical process that we, it can be done. Now, you know, there's, there's governance, there's financing, there, there are all these other issues that would have to work out, uh, to, to actually, and, and that would end up with these three boards having to come, to come to a meeting of the minds on that. What Wayne has demonstrated and what we asked as part of this is to show what are the benefits, what are the, the costs, uh, to, to go this route and what are, what are the, what are the, maybe some disadvantages, uh, which we would explore. So, so what, what they've done is kind of gotten to the point of, here's how we could do it if we choose to do that.
And Mr. David's correct. All of those discussions would need to start in earnest if this were, were to happen. Um, where minimal would be alternative one here, where you install your own P twenty-five system with a core. Um, that could always be then subsequently connected to, uh, um, to Fluvana if, if you decide to set up a, an agreement like that.
Let me ask the question. How, how do these cores communicate with each other?
Uh, they are interconnected via microwave. I'm gonna look at some, some dollar numbers here. But, uh, from tower to tower via microwave. Uh, we envision, for instance, if the three agencies were to decide to, uh, to put in their individual systems, share cores, um, each individual system would have a microwave system connecting all of the individual systems towers. In other words, Louisa would have its own microwave loop in Louisa County. Orange County would have its own microwave loop connecting tower to tower to tower. It's just a line of sight theme of microwave energy that connects one tower to the next. And of course, wherever your hub is, uh, the dispatch center or, or other hub.
Wayne, one, 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 one clarification on the microwave loop. That, that certainly is a, a standard type of, of solution for the public safety with these towers. But if we were to introduce a, a fiber optic backbone...
Same thing.
To these towers...
Fiber optic would, would handle it just as well.
Would, would, more potentially future-proof. Some, you know, microwave carries a lot of, lot of, lot of, lot, you know, there's a lot of data that could be, and if we're looking at a, a mobile data solution as well. Um, but by getting to, uh, uh, these towers being served by fiber optics is probably the most optimal, optimum, uh, scenario than, than, than a microwave.
Yes, if you can get fiber between all the towers, um, and fiber to, if you decide to go into an arrangement with your neighbors.
And you can do a kind of a combination between fiber and microwave.
Yeah, combination of them too. So these are all alternatives. Typically, microwave is done, uh, because typically getting fiber from one place to another is tough from the land acquisition and right-of-way perspective. Um, now there are some, uh, some solutions to that that, uh, Mr. David and I have discussed.
And I've discussed with the board the, the potential to marry this. This is kind of getting right down to the nub of the, the broadband last mile solution, um, where fiber to towers, not all of them, doesn't have to be, but some, could give us, uh, a, a lot of, uh, opportunity. And as you know, those conversations about an open access fiber network serving schools and general government and public safety in Louisa and Orange have, have just started their, 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 their conversation. So, um, I, I wanted, this was a good opportunity to say how fiber optics actually fits into this equation. It really is the foundation in which to build a public safety communication system in a future meaning mode.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And also potentially for rural broadband, uh, delivery by the private sector.
Mm-hmm. Um, and as Mr. David said, um, it doesn't have to be just microwave or fiber. Uh, it can be a combination of the two. Uh, one particular path can be microwave, the next path can be, can be fiber. Um, Fluvana, which is, as I said, in, in the, uh, in the project right now, they're using all microwave with the exception of one link, which is fiber. Um, so there is, uh, the capability for that. Also possible to utilize fiber with microwave as a backbone, uh, as a backup. Uh, of course, expense goes up, but the, uh, you have the ability to, um, avoid any microwave-related issues. If there's a hurricane-force wind and it points the dish a little bit differently, well, this is very line of sight. So if the dish points differently and your, your other antenna, your, your other end of the path antenna is over there, uh, you're pointing here now, then all of a sudden you've lost the link. So fiber would take over there.
Who do you send up to the tower to point it back in the hurricane?
Pardon me?
Who do you send up the tower to point the dish back?
Yeah. What I heard, right. Similarly, fiber, uh, what's referred, referred to as backhaul fade, um, uh, I'm sorry, backhoe fade, uh, where a fiber is in, dug up. Uh, they each have their advantages and disadvantages. They can be used as redundancy to one another, but of course, again, you're paying for both.
Right. And on the fiber, the cuts, if you have a diverse route, meaning like a water system, then you just send the signal the other way.
Right, you would, there's nothing. Similarly with the microwave. If you have one of the hops that is interrupted because of the topology of the microwave, all of the other, uh, all of them would continue to work. If it was a second hop, then anything between the first two would be, uh, would be orphaned for the period until it's repaired. But that's unlikely. Uh, in fact, I can't remember the last time that I've heard of a double failure in links, double severing of links, either in fiber or in microwave. Um, so all three alternatives are practical and beneficial. Alternative three's advantage is where, uh, and again, alternative three is, um, putting in your own system whether you use, uh, uh, do it in cooperation with, uh, Louisa or not. And backing it up, uh, by connecting to Fluvana, um, gives you the, uh, coverage goal of ninety-five percent. Uh, it gives you adequate coverage, adequate, it gives you desired coverage in sixty B buildings. It provides a redundant master site and that's interchangeable with what I've been referring to as the core, um, the brain of the system. Gives you redundancy in that, uh, with Fluvana. Um, it takes care, of course, of all the obsolescence issues because this would all be new equipment going in. And, uh, it would allow county school systems to reside on that as well as other agencies that you would put in here, uh, that, that you would, uh, like to put onto the system. One of the things that I didn't look at, um, I, I didn't include in the presentation, is capacity on the system. In other words, how many conversations can occur on the system at any given time? Um, right now, you're very limited. Uh, basically two channels per agency. Uh, so if two people are talking in Fire, then that's it. Uh, two people are talking on Sheriff, then nobody else on Sheriff, come on. With a trunking system, a P twenty-five trunking system, uh, you have the ability to split channels so that you only use basically half a channel. And that half a channel can be used for a conversation. The other half of the channel can be used for a separate conversation. And so now you've used one full channel, but you have two conversations going on. And all your other channels, with the exception of one, can, can be utilized in the same way. But, uh, with a trunking system, if you decide to go with Louisa and Fluvana, then by combining all of the frequencies into one pool for all of the agencies, your, um, your capability for simultaneous conversations skyrockets just because of the nature of trunking. Um, uh, you would have no consideration regarding any congestion, anybody having to wait for a channel to be available because, uh, because of the nature of trunking. Uh, if you had four channels from Louisa, four channels from, uh, Orange, and four channels from, um, Fluvana, a total of twelve channels, uh, without going through all the math, doubling that would be twenty-four, um, uh, subtracting one, uh, would be, uh, eleven channels, and doubling that would be twenty-two. So you would have twenty-two simultaneous conversations as opposed to each of you doing it separately where you have the ability to have only, uh, six simultaneous conversations. So, um, a big benefit to that. And, uh, and that is addressed in the report, but, uh, I didn't address that here. I wanted to make sure that I did. So, system coverage. This, this slide is says system reliability. It, it actually means system coverage. Uh, this is for alternative three. So now you can see that all agencies are at, uh, um, above ninety-five percent in county area cover, whereas we were looking at eight percent and eighteen percent or nineteen percent and fifty-four percent earlier. Now everything is above ninety-five percent. And mobile, not a whole lot of change, ninety-nine and a hundred percent as opposed to ninety-five and ninety-nine percent. Um, and a hundred percent is, a hundred percent minus some estimate. But, uh, you can see that, that coverage, uh, becomes a, uh, a very small consideration if you were to roll with alternative three. So now the numbers. Uh, for alternatives, one and three, uh, we basically, for, uh, capital costs, we'd be looking at about seven point nine billion dollars. Um, annual maintenance, two hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, if we wanted to put new towers at all sites, uh, and not reutilize existing towers, uh, at all sites, then that would be, uh, a seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar proposition. And the reason for that is that, uh, infrastructure, the, the towers, the shelters, the, uh, generators at the, if they were all new at the new sites, uh, at, at all five sites, then they would be able to be the towers, the generators, and the shelters for the last mile broadband in the future. Uh, some of the towers that are being used currently would not have the capacity for that. So they would require an additional tower, um, be built anyway. And, uh, then in addition, if you build the tower, you're not paying lease fees to someone else as a tenant on the tower. In fact, if you were to build the tower, you could lease space on the tower to other tenants and form a revenue stream for the town. Um, and there are many models that you can look at that, that, that will give you a, a potential revenue stream estimate for that. And then, uh, uh, looking at mobile data, that would be approximately a five hundred thousand dollar, um, addition. And I mentioned down here, uh, at the bottom, that the new towers are, uh, we, we talk about new towers here of the seven hundred and seventy-two thousand because of the, uh, the last mile broadband consideration. So, what happens next? Um, the next step would be to decide to move forward, uh, with a procurement of a replacement system. Whatever that system, whatever form you decide to do, uh, that obviously would be the first step to decide to do something. Um, you would need to define the personnel, uh, the project manager for that project, the core project team, uh, which generally is a, uh, is the project manager and representatives from the primary agencies involved. And, uh, in this case, up until this point, the core project team has been Nikki Tady from Communications, um, Major LaCasse from the Sheriff's Department, and Chief Harkness from Fire Department. So those three individuals have formed the core project team. Um, in addition to that, you would need to identify all the stakeholders, and that pretty much has been done during the data gathering phase here. Uh, not that that can't be modified somewhat. You might decide, well, let's not include schools. Or, uh, let's include another agency that we previously had not. Uh, the stakeholders are everybody that would be involved in the system. And then system manager, whoever would, after the system is built, actually have the responsibility to, uh, make sure that it continues to play property, make sure that, uh, new radios that are purchased or replacement radios are, um, programmed properly, set up policies and procedures for use of the system, especially if you are doing as, as Mr. David said, uh, um, setting up governance with, uh, with your, uh, neighboring counties, uh, maintaining that governance and, and setting up, uh, subcommittees and, and all of that. Your system manager would be an important player there. Um, commencing discussions with Fluvana and Louisa, if that's applicable, meaning if that's a direction we decide to go. And then beginning the phase two effort. Again, this is phase one, tasks two through five that we're talking about here. The next phase, phase two, is the procurement phase, where you actually develop a technical specification. And typically, they might be a three hundred-page document that, that nobody except the geeks reads and the vendor, um, reads. And then the vendor would respond to that. Uh, you would set up a procurement schedule and you would release an RFP. And exhibit through that RFP and incorporate it into it would be that technical specification. And that's the document the, the vendors would respond to. So, um, those would be the next steps if you decide to move forward. And, uh, that concludes my presentation. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions if we have any. And, uh, if I can't answer them here, I certainly can follow up.
Does anybody have any questions?
Only concern I have is make sure that the research includes that the coverage area included is along the Rapid Ant River, up in the eastern end of the county.
Okay.
Because the last time we did a radio system, it was screwed up, plain and simple. And we need to make sure that we cover the population areas a whole lot better than they're currently covered. We need the whole county covered, but we just totally dropped an entire area last time around.
And this is an area, and how you address that, um, is when you release your RFP to the vendor community, you say, this is the target for coverage percentage within the county. And these are mandatory coverage areas.
Right.
So you, Mr. Vendor, come back with the design showing us where you're going to need towers and show us exactly where you're cover, you'll cover, and guarantee us that that coverage will be there.
That's my turn.
And if it's not, then you, Mr. Vendor, on your nickel, provide that coverage, whether it means a new tower, whether it means, uh, new electronics, um, a, a solution to just cover a particular area. In fact, sometimes riverbeds are tough because of drop-offs down to the river. And sometimes it's, you're able to put a transmitter that looks right up the river and solves that issue. But that would be placed on the vendor to, uh, to provide that, uh, that capability. And it's guaranteed, it was guaranteed in the contract.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for making, uh, a, what I would see a fairly complex subject reasonably understandable.
Well, um, I'm gonna go there. Uh, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, if you have any that occurred to you, please follow them to, uh, to Nikki or Mr. David. He can get them to me and I can get answers right back. He can get them to me, and I can get answers right back.
Before Wayne steps down, I just want to kind of recap where we're going, because it took us a while to get here, obviously, to get this body of information, to say what the problems are and our choices for solutions. I think when the fifteenth comes at the work session, Nikki and her group, and oh, before I forget, Chief Deputy LaCasse apologized he fell ill today, he couldn't be here, and Sheriff was in Richmond, but they've been very involved with this project. Is that when the fifteenth, I think one of the things that you all would expect us to do as staff is kind of step back because there is other pieces to this, particularly from an emergency operations center, communications center perspective. And there's also consolidation of dispatches. And Sheriff and I talked decently this morning, just to confirm in principle that that's something that he would certainly be more than willing to work towards, but we have to work through the, again, the operational issues. But having a unified dispatch is certainly a goal, I think, that would come out of this project at some point in time. So with that, I think we're there, Wayne, on what the needs assessment says, and then we'll come back on the fifteenth with Nikki and that presentation. And then from there, looking for some guidance from the board on how you all want to start, I guess, taking bites at this apple and a better understanding of the project and the choices.
All right. Good, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and...
Mr. Chairman, we need to put up the mic here, so if you could take a podium where we're quiet right now. Take a real short break, if we could.
Yeah, we'll take a short break.
Thank you.
Call back. Call the meeting order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have some proposed changes to the agenda. Mr. David?
Yes, sir. We insert under the special presentations, Mr. Chairman, what item we're going to make that resolution for Mr. Woodcock?
I would make that right C, yeah, make that C one or something, C two.
Resolution for Mr. Woodcock. And then...
What was that? A resolution?
Resolution.
For Mr. Woodcock?
For Mr. Woodcock. You all had adopted this at our other meeting. He's here this evening to...
I'm going to present it tonight.
And then, under item five, I'd like to remove the check signing process matter and replace that with a report on the turnover audit through the Orange County Treasurer's Office as required by the Auditor of Public Accounts. Ms. Bradley will give you an update on that.
Okay. We'll also delete three A, there are none of the people for service awards are going to be here this evening. Okay.
Those are all the changes I had, Mr. Chairman.
Any other changes? Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion unanimous, that's okay. First item is a business spotlight, Mr. Jamie Moore, owner of Indian Trace Trail Rides.
Miss Jamie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. How's everybody tonight?
We're doing great.
Well, I just wanted to come kind of tell you guys a little bit about what we do. I own Indian Trace Trail Rides LLC. We're located on Tower Road, and I actually work with Mr. Goodman here. He is allowing us to use his property, and we are basically taking the horses that are in need of homes, maybe some groceries, maybe have an injury that can be worked out or something like that. We try to find horses in need, and we try to rescue them. And the ones that are suitable, that have the quiet temperament, that are ultimately healthy enough, maybe after a little bit of rehabbing or whatever the case may be, we use them for the general public for trail rides, for lessons. We like to help with children. We like to help with people who are maybe struggling with hard times and need a little bit of a pick-me-up. We also like to turn around and give back. We go and do fundraisers. We're working really closely with southern states throughout central Virginia, Manassas, Richmond, and, oh goodness. And we also work with the Goochlin Store. And we do pony rides, we do fundraisers, we're helping out actually currently with the Orange County Shelter. We're going to be doing some pony rides a couple of different places, and twenty-five percent of our proceeds will go to Orange County Animal Shelter to help them out with the recent undertaking that they've had to take on. And then everything else goes into our private rescue. And we're not 501(c)(3), and we don't want to be. Part of that is because then anybody can come up to say, okay, I want to hand you a dollar, and, you know, I want to go on a three-hour trail ride. Unfortunately, that's not going to keep these animals taken care of. A lot of them, with us taking in horses in need, they usually have additional bills. They need extra groceries, they've got extra vet bills, whatever. So our trail riding prices might be a little bit higher, but it's all going back into the farm and the animals. None of it comes back to us. I work full-time, my husband works full-time, we have a son, we do it just for the animals. We are taking the winter off on the trail rides. We have, like I said, one more set of pony rides, but that's pretty much it. You know, we just try to do the best that we can to help out animals and try to bring the information to the public.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like a good, a good business. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
You really need to come out and look at the trails, particularly back in Beaverdale. That's nice.
Does that mean I need to get on a horse?
Yeah, come on out. I still owe, I still owe Mr. Goodman here a trail ride.
There's a big animal.
I did it on a four-wheeler.
Oh, we're getting you on a horse. I got the perfect horse now, too. You'll like him.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I paid a quick visit to her operation a couple of months ago, I guess it was now, and she has a lot going on. No question about it.
She sure does. I'm lucky I wasn't soaking wet and covered in mud tonight, to be honest with you.
Are you still making the other things?
Yes, yes. Another thing that I do as well to help with the animals and fundraising and stuff like that on our farm, I hand-make rope halters for the horses, I make dog collars, I make belts, rifle slings, just about anything you can think of, leashes, just about anything. I hand-make it out of rope all myself.
You also have some people helping you, either as volunteers or employees or whatever it is, I recall.
We did have some volunteers. Through no one's fault in particular, we don't currently have any volunteers right now, but we are looking. We're always in search for help. We've got eighteen horses in our care right now, and we've got five dogs in our care. And it's just myself and my husband doing it now. We have an incredible babysitter. I've got to definitely give compliments to her because some weeks she has my son more than we do, but, you know, that's kind of what comes with the territory. You know, it's a good balance, though. We all work together as a big team in our own little family and community, so.
And she's born military.
I am, I am. It's veteran-owned and operated.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all take care.
All right. Next item is the presentation of resolution for recognition of Lindsay Wolfoke. I understand we have some family members here?
Yeah.
Whereas Lindsay Coleman Wolfoke, Jr. was born on November twenty-seventh, nineteen thirty-six in Orange, Virginia, and passed away on October twelfth, two thousand fifteen at the age of seventy-eight. And whereas Mr. Wolfoke was a proud graduate and athlete at Orange County High School, and he continued as a three-sport athlete at Bridgewater College, and ultimately received his master's degree from the University of Virginia. And whereas in keeping with his beginnings, Mr. Wolfoke was well-known and best described as a teacher and a coach, as he taught and coached in Kilmarne, Luisa, and Orange Counties for forty-four years, and cared deeply for his students and athletes, and was proud of the lasting impact and friendships he created with each of them. And whereas outside of his career, Mr. Wolfoke loved his family and his dog, and was a devoted follower of Bridgewater Football and New York Yankees Baseball, and his local farm and the Great Outdoors, which were both integral parts of his life. And whereas Mr. Wolfoke was also an active member of the Macedonian Christian Church, where he graciously served as an elder, a Sunday school teacher, and even delighted the youth as Santa Claus from time to time. Whereas Mr. Wolfoke was known as one of the greatest baseball coaches in the state of Virginia, someone who was no-nonsense but had a very gentle heart. And whereas through his many years of teaching and coaching, Mr. Wolfoke demonstrated a devoted interest in the welfare of his community and has truly left an indelible mark on Orange County, its youth and its athletics through his unwavering service and dedication. Now, therefore be it resolved on this thirteenth day of October two thousand fifteen that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses deep appreciation to and recognition of Mr. Lindsay C. Wolfoke, Jr. for his example as an honored and respected community leader and role model. Signed, V.H. Frame Chairman, Orange County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you so much.
What a nice, what a nice memory.
Thank you.
Obviously, somebody who deserved those, too.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, there was a terrific send-off a few weeks ago. The community, former players, you know, really turned out and, you know, showed what an impact that Lindsay had on the community, so we thank you for that.
Thank you for attending. This is really, excuse me, a bright spot in our grief, and Lindsay would be so thrilled as we are, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Sorry, I'm not too composed, but this is fresh. Thank you so much. Thank you.
How are you doing tonight? Good. All right.
A resolution of appreciation for Jimmy Woodcock for his many years of service to Orange County. Whereas many jurisdictions across the United States rely heavily on the service and dedication of volunteer firefighters to meet the growing public safety needs of a community, and Orange County, Virginia has five volunteer fire service organizations to rise to the call of duty in times of emergency. And whereas the fire department's comprised only of volunteers, have been at the heart of the local communities throughout the United States for more than two hundred years, providing manpower, apparatus, knowledge, and resources to communities at low to no cost. And whereas Jimmy Woodcock is an example of one of the many dedicated volunteer firefighters in Orange County, Virginia, having served over twenty-five years with the Mine Run Volunteer Fire Company. And whereas Jimmy Woodcock began his volunteer service in Orange County in June nineteen eighty-four and is now a life member of the Mine Run Volunteer Fire Company. And whereas moving through the ranks, Jimmy Woodcock has held several different positions throughout his volunteer service, including captain, and assistant chief, and most recently served as chief from two thousand three to two thousand twelve. It's a long time. Now, therefore it be resolved on this eighteenth day of November two thousand fifteen that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby extends his admiration and appreciation to Jimmy Woodcock for his dedication and devoted service to Orange County and its citizens through his many years of volunteer service with the Mine Run Volunteer Fire Company, protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the local community. Signed, V.H. Frame Chairman, Orange County Board of Supervisors. Wow, that's a long time. All good. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I hope I made a difference for the residents and people passing through Orange County.
I'm sure you did.
Yeah. I said all along, when I retired from work, I was going to stay back away from the volunteer department, and I've stuck to that. I highly recommend retirement.
I'm sure there's a lot of things you can do, and you probably will, somewhere or the other. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Presentation from the Rapid Ant Goodwill Industries, Mr. Tolson.
Mr. Dady, thank you. So I have to say, you know, I have five sons, and one of them is a firefighter and a rescue diver out in Sacramento, California. So I have a special fondness for people like Mr. Woodcock, and certainly salute that. And I would say two of my other sons played baseball for Warren County High School, and I'm pretty sure they lost some games to the coach through the years. It's good to be here. It's good to be here amongst friends. But first, I want to thank you all, all the supervisors, for the service that you provide of this community. You know, every decision you take is in the crosshairs of public opinion, and without committed public servants like you folks developing the culture and esprit de corps of a community, organizations like Rapid Ant Goodwill Industries can't thrive and prosper. So first of all, thank you for that. I am, as of January first, the incoming president and chief executive of Rapid Ant Goodwill Industries, and we serve thirteen jurisdictions, twelve counties and city of Fredericksburg. And we have been doing this kind of circuit ride, speaking to all the governing bodies of those various jurisdictions, for two purposes. One is to introduce myself and some of what Goodwill perhaps plans for the future, and just, or probably more importantly, is to give Woody Van Valkenburg, who is the present president and CEO of Rapid Ant Goodwill, a chance to say his fare thee wells. He has served in that position now for thirty-six years and has achieved a heck of a lot, so it's kind of a daunting task for the new guy. So I'm going to turn it over right now to Woody, and then I'll be back in just a second.
Thank you, Donnie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I want to say again hello again to Brian David. I knew Mr. David when he was county administrator of King George County, which is also one of the territories, one of the counties that Rapid Ant Goodwill has the pleasure to serve. My intention here is primarily to introduce Donnie, but you can see that Donnie can step right up and integrate right into a conversation, so not much is needed there. My other intention is to give you a little story behind Goodwill and what we're doing, and now that we've been invited in to work with Orange County and the Workforce Center, how our economic engine works. Because you all know Goodwill, all you good people out here know Goodwill, everybody knows Goodwill, you're the guys with the stores. We're also the guys with the stores that you give stuff to. What you don't know is what we do with the stuff. Ninety percent of Americans, after they hear about, do you know Goodwill, say exactly that. We give stuff to Goodwill, we think they do good work, but we don't know what it is. Well, what it is, is that we help the community create jobs for more people in the community, not by employing so many people, albeit we do. As an enterprise now, we employ six hundred and fifty people throughout our entire operation. But it's really through the people and the work that Marty Bywater Baldwin does in communities such as Orange that we are participating through or plowing the profits from our stores back into the community. We opened our store in Orange in two thousand eight, so here it is, seven years later, that we're able to start reinvesting back, doing what completes the cycle of our mission, which is to provide to people with barriers to employment the opportunity for training or employment themselves. So our job help centers that we have, we have four of them. You're going to explain what we have here, or maybe Mr. David will explain what we have here.
Marty was just here, actually.
Okay. Who was he? All right. So you know that then what our cycle is there, how we're helping people... So you know that then what, what our, our cycle is there, what, how we're helping people gain employment in the operation. I am particularly pleased that at the end of my career, we are operating in, in Orange County, not only the store, which generally can take money out if we don't have a program in the, in the community, but now we're able to invest in the community and serve the community. So I hope to check back with Donnie Tolson in a couple, three years, and with Marty, and find that we're doing even more work here in the, in the county of Orange. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the county, thank you for the invite in. Donnie's going to give you some facts and figures, and he has a video that you're going to show.
Indeed, I am. I would, I would ask the board's indulgence in a round of applause for a guy who's worked thirty-six years as CEO of anything. Yeah, so I can recall, we had a meeting with Chairman Frame and Administrator David, what, seven, eight months ago, and we talked about the prospect of moving some Goodwill services through the Workforce Center and the Piedmont Workforce Network, Helen Cawthon, into this community, and I can tell you, the reports from everybody, Marty, our IT technology folks who've been out here and helped equip the center and whatnot, is that, wow, these people are really friendly out there in Orange County. So we have been tickled to death with the reception we've received, and it's certainly helped us prosecute the mission and the services that we, that we have done. If you just heard from Marty, then you probably, these numbers are going to be old to you, but we're quite pleased so far with the progress we've made throughout our entire operation. And by the way, you have some facts and figures there for just Orange County, and then on the reverse side is for the entire county, but with specific regard to workforce development, that's what we are all about in Goodwill Industries. You know, we improve communities and lives one job at a time, and so that's what we're all about. So so far this year, Marty tells me, throughout our entire operation, we have helped, in one way or another, almost eight hundred residents of Orange County. Now, some of those, those folks are not yet ready for employment. For instance, we run an AmeriCorps Literacy, Good Skills Literacy Program, so they might be learning some of the prerequisites, if you will, to employment. And so far this year, into community competitive employment, thirty-five of your residents with the help of Goodwill Industries and that Workforce Center predominantly have gained employment. So that's a fairly significant number for, for a start. And recognize that the Workforce Center itself just started its operation here July first, so that's in a scant five months, essentially, those kinds of results. So we're very pleased with that, and we hope that you are as well. You know, the, the vision that I have is to follow a model that Goodwill traditionally uses across the country, Woody spoke to it briefly. We develop that economic base first, and that is a successful store that we have here in Orange, and then through time, as the community needs and wants, develop services to help on the workforce development side. So we started our first foray down that path, and we hope to, in the future, do even more, depending upon what this community needs. So we're engaging our strategic planning process, just starting right now, the next iteration of it, and certainly as part of our listening, we will be coming to folks like you and other luminaries of the Orange community, and seeking their input on how we can help, how we can deploy those resources that we earn from your community through our store, in order to better serve the community. So that's coming up. And I could go on and on and on, but my particular vision is, is from our founder, Edgar Helms. He was a Methodist preacher in the southern part of Boston, Massachusetts. He started something called the Church of All Nations in eighteen hundred and ninety-eight, and in two thou- nineteen oh-two, rather, Goodwill Industries was formally born by him, and he said, "Friends of Goodwill," and I hope all of you are friends of Goodwill, "friends of Goodwill be dissatisfied with your work until every unfortunate and handicapped person in your community has an opportunity to achieve to his fullest usefulness and enjoy a maximum of abundant living." So those are all very flowery and eloquent words, but I want to put a face to it, and the face to it is right behind me, and she's carrying her little child. Her name is Shamaya, and to demonstrate what we do, she's our best spokesperson, and so we're going to play a little video that she's going to be a star of, as soon as Allison helps me out here.
My feelings towards my future, I'm eager to know, I'm eager to like be there, I'm excited. I got pregnant my twelfth grade year of high school, and I graduated, and then I-
She's on there, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And hit this.
Hit this one, there you go. All right.
My feelings towards my future, I'm eager to know, I'm eager to like be there, I'm I got pregnant my twelfth grade year of high school, and I graduated, and then I found the place I lived with my son's father, and it just wasn't working out that well for me, so I found a place in Orange called the Paul Steffan Foundation. So I moved in, and then I got connected with this program with Marty and Sarah.
The Workforce Center is a place where people who are looking for work or resources for education can come in. We've been fortunate enough to receive a grant through the Piedmont Workforce Network to operate this Workforce Center, and here under one roof have a number of partners together to provide a number of services for job seekers.
I came and met with Sarah and heard all the things that they could do for me with school and doing a work experience and things, and when I heard the work experience, it kind of sparked my interest. Not too long after that, we went into the interview for the Goodwill, and I got the job pretty much the next day. I'm still working at Goodwill, I still want to finish up. I love working at Goodwill. I think school and getting something I really want to do would be the best route. I'm still at the Paul Steffan Home, they provide pretty much everything that you would need for your child, for yourself.
What we do is, we help women regain their dignity, get their life back together. We want to emotionally, physically, and also spiritually help them get back on their feet with counseling and, and their lives, to get them back where they need to be. The regional home behind us is going to be for women, now we're in the middle of renovating it, bringing it back to life, as we say, and so start to house the women and babies and children if we need to. We couldn't have had more support from the county, the, the Planning Commission, the supervisors, and from the town of Orange, they've been fantastic. Everything we went and asked them for, they've given us. Would love to complete it over the winter, so as soon as spring hits, we'll be ready to open our doors so women can come in.
I'm very glad and blessed that I found a place that is just so encouraging and supportive.
The one thing the women need to have is dignity back in their life, and a lot of things they haven't been given is an opportunity to even have a chance to gain, regain that dignity. With Goodwill Industries, they just come to help them so much in the respect of allowing them to work, giving them flexible hours. It, it's fantastic to have another group out there that will help them alongside with us to get them back on their feet and allow them to work through their situations that they're in.
We work with a lot of individuals, and Shamaya stands out. We open doors for folks, and Shamaya not just walked through that, that door, she, she ran through that door.
This program, it's helping me like build a future, obviously, to take care of my son, and I'm very glad that I found something like this. It's, it's an amazing thing that they're doing.
So I would beg your indulgence even further in asking you to salute Shamaya, someone who's made progress in her life, on her progress to date. And what did you say?
Zion.
Zion? And Zion. Okay, that's great. And we do have Randy I see back there from Paul Steffan Foundation. So that, that the other point I want to stress here, and thank you Randy for coming, is that part of our approach to working with any community is to find willing partners, and Woody is famous for saying, "Collaboration is..." What is that you say?
It's an unnatural act performed by unwilling adults.
Yeah, so it's a tough haul, but that's, that's the one thing we like to do, is to find those unwilling adults who are willing to have an unnatural-
To be quite willing, we thank you.
And one last point, Marty tells me there's a job fair tomorrow in the Workforce Center, did I get that right? So I really encourage any of you, if you haven't seen it in action yet, that'd be a good time, if you have a few minutes, just to stop by and visit with him. I thank you for your time, if you have a question or comment, we'd be glad to entertain it. Otherwise, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Randy, for what you're doing out there.
Now, we'll be too tacky if we just leave, now, would it?
No.
Right, because we're there.
Okay, next item on the, is the consent agenda. So, second, any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the Department Turnover Audit of the Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I just wanted to give you a brief update on the requirement for a turnover audit. As you know, our Treasurer, Phyllis Yancey, is retiring at the end of December, and the Code of Virginia requires us to have a turnover audit between treasurers, so there's a portion of the audit that is the state's responsibility, that has to do with income tax and estimated income tax and other revenues that the treasurer collects and remits to the state, and then there's a local portion of that audit. So the local portion is estimated to cost around six to eight thousand dollars, and I'll be coming back on the fifteenth with an actual budget amendment for that, but I did want to give you the heads-up that it was coming. The APA this year has hired Brown Edwards to do thirty-some of these audits across the state, where treasurers and clerks of the court are changing over. So it will be Brown Edwards coming in, they're going to be coming in on the thirty-first of December, so that they're here the final day to count cash, they look at receivables, and ultimately, both the outgoing and the incoming treasurer will sign off, and at that point, papers are filed with the clerk of court that relieve the outgoing treasurer of any liability. So that's what the purpose of the, of the audit really is.
Did you give the estimated cost, Linda?
Six to eight thousand.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
How, how does the local portion differ from what Brown Edwards is doing, or are they doing the lo- local portion as well?
They would be, that would be why we, we would be paying the six to eight thousand. Theoretically, I think we could choose to go out and hire a different firm to do it, but since they're familiar with our books, and they're going to be here anyway to do the state portion, you know, it seems like it was most expedient just to have them do the local portion as well.
Is it primarily just the handoff that you were describing, that with the local portion?
It's, it's just the handoff, really.
Oh, okay. So they're not re-auditing the audit from the state, or anything like that?
No, no.
State mandated that we spend some money.
Well, they are doing that.
Blaming something. I would say that this is a textbook example of the Yeltsin Fund.
Yeah, but six to eight's a whole lot more palatable than the handmade one.
That is true.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'll take six. A lot of these ones.
Any further questions for Linda?
Nope.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Next item is County Attorney's Report.
I have no report.
County Administrator's Report, Board of Supervisors, two thousand sixteen legislative priorities.
Yes, sir. As you all know, at your October thirteenth meeting, you had, you adopted your legislative priorities for the upcoming twenty sixteen General Assembly Session, and we, I had not distributed that until the election cycle had run its course, and Delegate Freedus and Senator, Delegate Elect Freedus and Senator Reeves are now, and will get this, these legislative priorities. But also, it became known, was communicated to you all, that the property owners in Gordonville Gates subdivision could potentially be served by having Orange County included in a Code of Virginia provision, and essentially, and I won't go into the detail of, of my board report, but this code section of Orange County were added will allow us to work with property owners out there to establish what I would characterize as a special assessment district to allow us to work with them in getting the road, essentially a surface code on about four streets, and get it into the state secondary road maintenance system. We have no surety in place from the original developer, the original developer's no longer financially viable, is gone. These folks have bought into a subdivision that was supposed to have a VDOT street, it's not that case, and it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and as we, as the time goes on, that road certainly deteriorates. The Director of Planning and Zoning has also noted that there are a number of other subdivisions that might be, I guess eligible with willing property owners to, to go through this process. The county has certainly kept hold in, in its use of funds for this, since you would collect and reimburse the county for whatever costs, and then once it's into the state's system, then it's conveyed to the state, and it becomes the state responsibility for maintenance going forward. I have contacted Delegate Elect Freedus and Senator Reeves, and made them aware, and enlisted their support. In fact, I've exchanged a couple of emails as recently as yesterday and today with Delegate Elect Freedus with some questions, and I think I've been responsive to him on, on these questions, and have asked, I think he's approaching Legislative Services to go through that process to get the legislation done. Other than that, my recommendation is, you all amend your legislative priorities to include this code section, and then the County Attorney and I would work with our delegates, our delegation, to, to, I guess, go through the legislative process to have this added to the code section. Last thing I'll say, and I certainly didn't work with Supervisor Johnson, because this is in his district, but this would be a property owner initiated, they have to request it, majority of the property owners, the board would then be the kind of the responding party. But I, I, I think this is a, a, I guess, a prudent approach to help some property owners who need, frankly, some assistance to get, to get a material matter taken care of in their, in their subdivision.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
While we're still on the topic of the legislative priorities, we're have the legislative dinner on Thursday evening, and are there any of these priorities, I'm going to speak, are there any of the, these priorities that you think we should mention? I don't think I'm going to mention all, all of them, but if there are any that I should raise in that discussion at that time. I'm thinking this particular one, if, if somebody's from Gordonville is there, I'll let them raise that particular one that we just-
Well, I think the subdivision's in the county, so that's-
Okay, it's in the county, not in, all right. I can raise it, but I'm looking, since you've already talked to them about it, I don't think it's anything new. Any, any of these others that you think are important enough, we should focus a little bit on them?
I would mention the, the transportation, primary and secondary road funding, because of HB two and other changes-
Okay.
We're left even further out of the picture than we were-
Okay.
Than we have been, so I would, that deck is clearly stacked against us.
Yep.
Not intentionally, but, but in, in effect, it is, and so I would-
It is intentionally.
Well, it probably is intentionally, but, yeah.
But yes, absolutely, I was, I was going to bring the same one up.
All right. Anybody else have any other I should mention? I'll pick one or two more, but I want to make sure I got whatever you all thought was important to mention.
I, I was going to mention this during my board comment, but if you'll allow me, I'll bring it up now, because it, it does fit with one of these. In the process of looking at the study and information about the radio system for our first responders, and some discussions that I've had with, with Brian over time, it seems to me that because of movement and technology and grants and other needs, it's time that we should consider forming a, a committee of, of a couple of board members to really take on the issue of broadband and the county's needs with respect to that, and, and look at it from the perspective of the overall need, whether it's the county's needs, the school systems, the first responders, businesses, as well as, of course, citizens. And I think there's some opportunities that are beginning to work their way through project, various projects to test one technology or approach.
various projects to test one technology or approach and these kind of things. And it's time that we, uh, see if we can't grab a hold of it and, and form an initiative on behalf of the county. A lot of legwork's gonna be required to understand all the different pieces of it. And so, uh, I think that maybe, uh, deciding to, to form a committee of, of a couple of, uh, board members and, uh, and maybe a staff or two is, is appropriate to, uh, to really define the issue, figure out what the options are, what, what we can do would be, uh, in order. I mentioned it now because one of the, uh, the points here that we, uh, have in our legislative priorities deals with broadband. And I think maybe if we were to take such an action to form that committee to, to make Senator Reeves and, uh, Delegate Freedus aware of that to say, "We're gonna be talking to you guys about it," would, could be in order, so.
Well, I agree with the idea of forming a committee to start working this thing. I can mention that in, uh, at the, uh, on Thursday night, I can mention that, uh, we would be doing that if that's, uh, the consensus to put together some people on that. Okay? Do we wanna define who tonight?
I'd, I'd be happy to serve Jim on that.
Okay. Alright. I understand why.
Well, Jim and I were talking about it earlier and then we, we, our two districts are, are the kind of the, uh, you know, the horses' tail.
Out of the, uh.
When it comes to, to, uh, coverage.
We have needs.
Yes, we have needs.
So, do we wanna establish the committee of those two?
So move.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here goes the railroad. Alright.
Well, I, I, I did it because as I say.
No, but I, I will men- I will mention that we formed this and that, uh, the two of you, uh, maybe as you, uh, as you begin to, uh, look into this further, that, uh, you may be looking to them for specific help.
Well, you know, Orange County's kind of been standing around waiting to be swept off its feet for, for years and years now. So I think it's about time we put an ad in personal column, you know, see if we can't be able to make a way.
And there are state programs that, that could be helpful.
Alright, well, okay.
And it, you know, a lot of times the squeaky wheel gets grease and all those kinds of, of things, so. Uh, yeah, I was, I was, I was glad that Jim brought this up and I think it's something we need to.
Okay.
Kinda need to pop up in the priority list.
Yeah, and, and just to, a com- I made the, the comment about several things that have taken place. Just about, uh, three weeks ago now, the, uh, I triple E, the Electrical Engineering Society who sets the standards for communication equipment, things like that, put in place a new standard for, for example, for the TV white space spectrum that we could talk about, which will double the throughput going from, you know, mid twenty megabits per second to over fifty. And all of a sudden, that opens up an entire new world because you can now do video streaming and all sorts of other things. And so, people that have services like Comcast and other things that there have issues with might, might be presented with an alternative. Now, specifically because of that new standard. And so, there's a lot of movement. There, there were two hundred and sixty-four grants from the federal program for broadband last year, only two of which were in Virginia. Some of those grants were over twenty million dollars, by the way. Now, I don't know that we're in line for anything like that.
No, but.
Those are just examples of what's lying out there that need to be.
But part of that tying that to public safety, tying it to regional public safety, all of that kind of stuff can, uh, add leverage to the, uh, to, uh, our position on the grant.
Okay.
Alright.
Can I ask that the committee also be aware that towns have an interest in this too? And ask that we be included?
Well, the towns have some resources in terms of fiber and other kinds of things that are.
But we.
That need to be.
Broadband is important to the town too.
Yep, alright. Next item is the two thousand sixteen seventeen operating budget guidance.
Alright, um, Mister Chairman, uh, let me get to my equipment notes here. You know, as you know, the Director of Finance presented her five-year financial forecast. Uh, last year when we went through the budget development process, the board, uh, wanted an opportunity to discuss next year's operating budget and give me guidance, um, on this. And, uh, so I think we just kind of carved out some space either at this meeting or at the next meeting to do that. As you know, Supervisor White and Supervisor Johnson have, have formed the, the kind of the Working Finance Committee and, and we've been able to share some information with them a- at this point. Um, and I guess where we are, I, 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 you know, get, look at those two to kind of figure out, um, where we are with coming, you know, getting the board involved with some guidance at this point.
Well, I, I think, uh, we're a finance committee, we're not a budget committee. So the, so when we got, I asked for, to gonna get the finance committee together so we could kind of chase down some, some items, having to do with the fund balance and, and trying to figure out where all the, uh, where all pieces are and how they fit and that sort of thing. So that's, that's what we're, I think, trying to do at this point. And, uh, we wanna make sure we're a hundred percent sure of, of how much money's out there and where it's coming from and where it's going and that sort of thing. So have a better understanding of the overall, not specifically this year's budget, but just, you know, from year to year. Because a lot of times, if nothing's blowing up, we kind of don't, we don't delve into it. So I, I just kind of wanted to get into some of the, kind of the, uh, the way it's all put together and, and so I could understand it better.
Pretty much on the revenue side than the budget being part of the, the expenditure side, so. One is trying to track down that if- if- if you're real, but fund balance, you know, how, how is that actually measured? And, and, and part of that was in her quarterly report. And so, um, we're gonna work through that so that then we can report back to, to the board kind of where the revenues are. Uh, certainly we're in equalization with the reassessment.
I would agree with that.
And that's gonna present some, I guess, uh, uh, i- issues with, with, with revenue generation for next year's budget. Um, uh, just as a footnote, I just received an email, um, from the Commissioner of Revenue. We're, uh, making arrangements for representatives from the reassessment, uh, firm, Wapler East, to come to your fifteenth meeting, uh, to give you kind of a recap of their work and, and certainly a lot of the questions I think you've been fielding from your, your constituents.
None whatsoever.
I'm glad info on that email.
But this, I, I don't wanna make, this is gonna be a, a, a challenging budget cycle. There always are, I mean, it's never, you're never in a resource-rich environment, you're working to provide a, uh, maintain a level of service, address needs, uh, some of them you can't defer but so long. But we are, and I let known to the department heads, it's a, it's a, it's gonna be a challenging cycle. Uh, the schools, uh, frankly have their issues. And I don't put it in there, it's our issues too, we're, 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 we are the schools, the schools are us. And, um, the composite index has gone up, which that means that our share of pulling down the state money is going up correspondingly. Uh, but the enrollment is dropping, which means less state money coming in and, and, and how do we maintain? So, uh, I, I say there's a lot of crosswinds, if I could use that metaphor, that we still don't have a, a good handle on, on where we may end up. And then we, on top of it, we have a compressed cycle. Uh, we have to have a budget put to bed about thirty days, Glenda Wright, that's about thirty days, uh, earlier than we're normally doing. So, uh, and then we have the wildcard of the General Assembly dealing with the Governor McCullough's biennial budget. So I, I don't know whether we'll have the ability to stop the clock and just wait. Uh, we may have to make some, some decisions, um, with, with the best available information, but, but have to make some decisions.
And there are a couple of items that we might, uh, need to at least consider, uh, some, some policies regarding things like, carryforwards and how and under what conditions those are done and these kind of things. So there, there are still some policy questions that are, that are sitting out there that, that we, we touched on briefly this afternoon in some discussion, but, but need a little bit more, uh, thought and discussion before we talk about them or we're ready to talk about them, frankly.
But I, I do know one thing, I, I've done this for eight years with three different administrators, and I have yet to have one tell me that it was an easy budget cycle.
They're not allowed. They take an oath never to.
Some are hard and some are really hard.
That's day two of counting administrators.
Alright. Any more discussion on this? Alright, Germana Wilderness Area Plan.
Uh, I, I guess I'll, Mr. Frame or Chairman Frame or, or Mr. White to kind of fill you in on from our last meeting, it was, uh.
Or Mr. Crozier.
Or Mr. Crozier.
I am still getting up to speed, thank you.
Thank, oh, well, that, that'll.
Is that your report?
That's my report, yes.
Now that we, we have all, all three rep, you know, folks on there. But, uh, we're, we're working the parallel tracks of economic development, infrastructure, um, land use and, and, and planning and the historical cultural opportunities. Um, just an update on, on the historical, Zan Nelson's work, uh, I've approved the matrix. Uh, she's out working to populate that, uh, matrix. And so, uh, trying to figure out, you know, what, what is a high priority out in the area. Our utility engineers are out working the, the projections and things and should be back. I think next week, uh, we will have the, uh, Josh and Thomas will be coming back with, uh, uh, I guess a kind of an outline or a, a framework to deal with the planned development districts that may be, uh, that would be coming forward. Germana Wilderness Area, um, as well as some development design standards within those districts. And then Tommy, um, I think, uh, with economic development should be coming, uh, whether that next meeting would be for economic developments.
Okay.
But we filled the two hours, that's for sure.
We never seem to have too much time. Alright, any questions? Alright. Any new business? Any old business? Any board comment?
Yes, and it's somewhat new business and somewhat old business as well. I did receive a email after a phone conversation with constituent bound at, uh, in our districts, uh, regarding solicitation ordinance. And Mr. Kay would like to see that brought up and discussed and passed. And as I advised him, uh, that we would look at it to a point. But, uh, that we really have to see if it's the last time we've visited the issue. It is so restrictive that it prohibits anyone from doing any solicitation on, uh, public properties. So I told him that I would bring it up tonight and I'd like to, at some point, have a discussion on that.
He, uh, gave us a copy of the SPOT seat.
The city of Fredericksburg.
City Fredericksburg.
And, which is something we're going to have to look at and have the county attorney look at.
It, it was, it was not necessarily saying you can't, uh, solicit. It was more like you can't pound on the door, pound on the windows, that kind of stuff, uh.
Right, it, it was, it's something that we're going to have to have the county attorney look at and see if it's anything that we can actually. I, I, and in my, my opinion, it would be any of the things listed there. You pick up the phone, you call the sheriff's office and the sheriff will deal with it.
Yeah.
Right, it, it's, it's not actually a solicitation ordinance, uh.
Sounds like assault.
And, yes, and I've found the city of Fredericksburg has some unique.
Challenges.
Or, or, and, and unique ways of doing some things.
I can give you the quick ten-second law.
Okay.
Whatever we do, we just gotta treat it by the same, the Girl Scouts and the vagrants get the same treatment. So if we say the vagrants can't do it, the Girl Scouts can't do it. But we can keep, we can ban soli- for public safety purposes.
And, and we understood the rationale for not doing that. And I don't think that that, uh, I don't think the board has changed on that particular, uh, thing. But the question was, what are the other things that, uh, can be done? And again, uh, uh, I'll forward you what they've got.
Well, you can have regulations like distance from the road, that you gotta stand at least X feet away from the road, you can't approach the vehicles, those are the kinds of things you can do.
This is aggressive or dangerous solicitation.
One, one of the, yeah, and one of the, uh, and one of the elements of that, of course, is, is, uh, you know, what can the sheriff do? And do we really wanna, uh, dump a lot of workload on the sheriff, uh, you're getting a tape measure out and let's say you're standing too close. Uh, I think we need to, uh, if, if, if we do something like this, we need to make sure that, uh, Mark is, uh, is, uh, looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, is this gonna be a, a feasible, can he do something reasonably?
Well, the one, is that, he sent me the one from Fredericksburg as well. It was dealing, uh, specifically with public property. I mean, it was defined as, you know, streets, sidewalks, pathway, parks, public property, not, not any.
Not private property.
Not private property at all, so that it, uh, the, the sheriff would, you know, have more of a reason if, if it's narrow to, but I, I still don't know if it worked, but that's.
And, and again, even before, we weren't considering private. I mean, it was, it was always public and it was always pretty much the roads. And, uh, and if we, if we try to do this on the roads, again, uh, I mean, they looked like not unreasonable things to say people shouldn't be doing, but at the same time, uh, how easy is that to enforce and are we creating a, you know? I just try to keep encouraging my constituents not to give them any money.
And to re- if there's offensive language and that sort of thing, report them. Don't, you know, if they, as he conveyed to me is they continue to do the same thing over and over again, well, if they're doing it over and over again, there's plenty of time to call the sheriff's office.
But the point, the point is having an ordinance in place wouldn't have made them, you know, if they're still.
Exactly, I, I just wanted to bring up constituents' concerns.
Well, the other, other point is that we live in a rural community and rural communities have fewer rules.
I understand that, and I, and I'm not, I'm not anxious to, to create, uh, a lot of workload here. Uh, you know, I mean, I can understand that people get, uh, frightened if you've got a little old lady up there and somebody's beating on the window saying, "Hey, why don't you donate to, uh, whatever program, veterans, I'm a, I'm a veteran, you should give me money." Thing, you know.
Right, and it's, it, the, to me, it appears the city of Fredericksburg ordinance is nothing more than a ordinance of common sense items that, uh, don't really accomplish anything. But that's my comment, thank you.
Okay.
I had a comment before you're done.
What?
I just wanna say that the special presentation, it appears, is night, I think that's about the best thing we've ever had. Everything was really good and substantive, you know?
Oh, you mean, uh, from the, uh, on the communications?
Well, I mean, the business spotlight all the way.
Oh, yeah, that was good.
Things, everything. Yeah, I just, I thought it was, it was a really damn good feel-good moment, so.
It was, yep, I agree.
Yeah, we've got some good people in this community.
The, the, Jim, do you wanna talk about the retreat situation or we?
I was gonna do that as a calendar item, but.
Oh. Well, we can go down there. Uh, any questions on the informational items? Any, uh, appointments? I do have a question on, uh, Mister Gambalvo on the Thomas Jefferson Area Community Criminal, Criminal Justice Board. And they apparently have a two-term limit. I think he's in his second term, although there is a provision if we can't find anybody to, to appoint him again. I don't know if we should, uh.
I, I, you've appointed me as well to represent the county, the board on that, so I'm just, we are, have.
Alright.
Two, two representatives, so, um, I didn't wanna think that we were unrepresented.
Okay, I just, if there's a, an issue with it, I mean, I'll, I'll give him a call and see if he wants to continue. But I wanted to make sure I wasn't, uh, calling him only to find out, I'm sorry, you can't. No, we just checked that out. What's that?
I'll be happy to check on that for you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other, uh, any other questions or comments about appointments? Okay, calendar.
My only question on the calendars, uh, we have the Planning Commission on there twice a month. They've reverted back to once a month, this is not correct. The second meeting is if needed.
Is as needed only, so, uh, we made kind of the judgment call to put both meetings on there and then remove the second one, um, if needed.
Okay.
If that's okay. Absolutely.
Alright. Uh, schedule a public hearing for, well, let's get your topic first, Jim.
I, I have a calendar problem. We had, uh, scheduled the retreat for the first Saturday and Sunday of March. Turns out I will be away. And so I would propose that we try to reschedule that. I mean, obviously you, you, you four guys can, can continue, but I'm, I'm gonna be out of the area, so... Turns out I had a trip at the end of February that I didn't know was gonna linger into March, but it does linger into March. And so, uh, I won't be back.
Well, Allison, try to just, uh, work something with everybody?
One of the things with, uh, Ty and Miss St. Clair, she, we released some other dates she had, so we're making contact and we may migrate into more of an April stance.
Okay, alright.
But we'll, we'll go and, and make sure we kinda turn the delays and stuff.
So as of now, we're rescheduling that to, to an unknown date.
Releasing those dates and then rescheduling.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that, I just didn't look far enough in advance.
Okay. Uh, public hearings only for rezoned fifteen oh one.
What, what is that? Does anybody know? Jim, do you know what that, do you recognize that as? Fifteen oh one.
Top of my head, I do not, uh, Garrett Street LLC. Oh, is that, uh, the Gordonsville?
That's the Barbersville.
Uh, Barbersville, uh, rezoned subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I shouldn't think it would be.
Okay, so I get a mo- uh, is...
That's the...
I thought it was Barbers.
I just, I, I, I mean, I know that rezoned, but I didn't recognize it by that name, yeah, that's what I...
I, I, I mean, that may be what it is, but I don't recognize that name.
Maybe we oughta find out what it is before we schedule it?
No, but I believe that that is what, um, hold on just a second, I can let you know.
It's Thursday night, I'm planning.
Yeah, uh, that's what I was just...
Yeah, that's what they have this Thursday night.
Is it? Okay, well, I guess that's it.
No, so that is it, okay.
Just working, is that needed?
Neither did I, that was the question.
The application was by Robert Springer on behalf of Garrett Street LLC.
Okay, so that is, yep, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved, second.
All in favor of res- of scheduling this for, uh, uh, January twelfth?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's five zero, alright. Okay, now we're down to recess.
Yeah.
Ready?
Read the, uh... Alright. Whereas the Board of Supervisors desires to discuss enclosed meeting the following. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty seven eleven eighty seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed session now therefore be resolved. The Board of Supervisors of Orange County, see if I authorize the discussion of the aforementioned enclosed meeting.
A motion to that effect, I'll move, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, it can go, uh, is it good enough?
Assume Tommy's here, right?
He's here.
Okay.
We, we would like to go home.
Okay.
Did you get your district four resident who didn't get a yellow card satisfied?
You, did you receive the email after he got the email from the reassessor?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it was very interesting. Because here, reassessor swore up and down, he'd had numerous email conversations.
Oh.
And lo and behold, he hadn't had one.
That's very helpful.
Right, oh yeah, he never, oh, and his attitude when I called over there was less than stellar. I'm, I'm not...
That's another issue we need to talk about, it's inappropriate, uh...
Yes. Unfortunately, I think I got the appropriate answer, but I didn't like.
Oh, the one I...
Yes.
It's like auditors only.
Exactly.
Kinda like, just wanted the, the one that we didn't like and didn't hire.
I don't think Tommy's gonna like it.
I'm going to...
Hey, Bob?
School board, county board.
Have an envelope, Rose.
Oh, thanks.
We'll recycle this way, too.
Alright.
Yes, go ahead.
Of other groups around the county, um, had their insight or their put forward what they saw as, uh, priorities for economic development in county. Um, and those, uh, stakeholder feedback, there was kind of seven different priorities that came up from, uh, attraction, climate, infrastructure, uh, the plan itself, quality of life, real estate and, uh, workforce, and then, and then there was other. Uh, so feel free to, uh, uh, peruse that and, and, uh, see a little bit more on, on what, um, different groups, uh, had interest, uh, or what, uh, thought were, uh, priorities. So, uh, after, after spending about a year, um, meet, meeting with these different groups, uh, we also did some research in-house. And then, um, came together with the EDA and at last meet, last meeting, uh, in November, we, uh, had our mission, created our mission and vision statement, uh, which is on this outline page. You see my ugly notes on it now, but, uh, uh, you can see our mission and vision we came up with. And then, um, what you'll see is kind of, uh, right now, a draft of what our outline looks like. We'll have a brief summary, some of the, uh, research we've done. And then, um, uh, along with some of the stakeholder feedback, and then where our departmental goals, um, and, uh, target, uh, industries, we'll see. This, this, this last, uh, handout here highlights where, um, our existing clusters are. Um, obviously, uh, agribusiness is, is, uh, a big part of Orange County. And then you'll see, uh, on the far right column is, uh, what our regional target industries with our partnership with Central Virginia Partnership. And then, uh, comparing the, the two of those, um, with our existing cluster and our regional target industries in the middle column is what we've identified as our actual target industries for Orange County. And, uh, we'll, we'll hit upon those as our strategic plan is, uh, fully developed. I, I don't need to go into this, but you all have the handout if you have any questions. Uh, and if I need filler, I was told I can read the mission and vision statement to you as well.
Something I, it caught my eye under the, uh, uh, industry list there, under health services, you don't show an existing cluster. And I'm not sure I wouldn't X that in, given the Dogwood Village operation and, uh, uh, other rehab centers around and things like that. I, I mean, I don't know how you're defining health services in that area, but, but, uh, you know, there's...
Especially with Germana being...
And, and then, you know, Germana and their nursing program and, and so forth, so you might think about that.
Well, it's, I, I, I can show you that at another meeting, uh, uh, how that research was done, but it's basically taken through, uh, what each individual business's NAICS code is, their North American Industry Classification. And, uh, and then you compare what Orange has to what the national average is. And if you are at or above the national average, then you have a cluster on that. Germana wouldn't have fallen in that health industry, but it is a good point that they, they have those services. But in, under its NAICS code, it's classified as an educational or academic institution.
Do you see any of the, uh, and, and it's probably not so much in, in where we're targeting, but in terms of, of what businesses we're seeing? Are we seeing any that are, that are supportive or working with existing businesses in, in the community? In other words, I, I, I look at the, the Aerojet expansion, but I don't know of any other businesses that are, that are helping them other than maybe some suppliers with regard to the expansion. But in terms of consulting support, uh, parts support, uh, do we see any of that, uh, in terms of things that are coming in there that are, that are actually building on? We have a business here and other people are sort of, uh, moving in to support that.
Right, that's a, that's a, uh, expansion of the cluster analysis that we would, uh, look at, um, offhand directly, uh, with Aerojet. I don't have, uh, knowledge of that specifically.
But I'm thinking of any of the other major areas that we, we, the mother, major clusters, are we seeing anything that are, uh, uh, that are coming to Orange County because of the cluster?
Right, um, I'd have to go back and review, uh, our leads over the years, uh, of what, what we generated and what might actually be either a customer or supplier to one of our existing businesses. But that is by far one of, uh, the targets that we wanna do is, is, uh, find out who the, the customer base is of our existing industry as well as their consumer base and, and, and see if it makes sense for any of them to locate in the area.
Any other questions, uh, on the, uh, strategic plan? Any other comments that you have on the strategic plan?
That is it on the strategic plan. Um, so we can move on to our, our final, uh, agenda item is, uh, update you where we are on the, uh, Germana Wilderness Area Plan Steering Committee. Uh, after adoption of the plan, the Germana Wilderness Area Plan, uh, those who are on the, on the steering committee, uh, you should receive this, uh, handout as well. Uh, there's now four, uh, subcommittees, um, working, uh, with the steering committee. Uh, task one is, uh, looking at infrastructure, task two, historic and cultural assets, three is planning and land use, uh, zoning and land use, and then four is, uh, economic development. And here, uh, uh, we presented it at the second to last steering committee. Uh, we talked about all the incentives that are available through the state. Uh, that would be through Virginia Economic Development Partnership, SBA, uh, Small Business Loan Financing, uh, through the Port of Virginia and a handful of other state agencies. And then, uh, we showed you, uh, or not you, but we showed the steering committee, uh, examples of some other local incentives, uh, that some surrounding communities, um, uh, provide, uh, through their economic development department or their EDA. And, um, and then we, uh, also, uh, presented what we submitted for our enterprise zone application. Um, we, we didn't get the enterprise zone designation, but it's still, uh, with some great, uh, groundwork we took forward that we can now expand upon those existing, uh, not existing, but, um, uh, incentives that we developed and perhaps use as we move forward, uh, in the steering, uh, for the GWAP Steering Committee. Uh, so we, we just, uh, in our meeting, um, just before this one, uh, we, we, uh, we went through each of the subareas now and, uh, and reviewed all the, uh, uh, designations of kind of what, what the future conditions they see of, of businesses in each of the subareas and just kind of tried to brainstorm if there's anything else, uh, that we could see, um, or expand upon or even narrow down a little farther. And, and so that's where we're gonna take our next steps, um, working on what, what, how we'll narrow and define what our, uh, strategy will be for target markets and, uh, and potential incentives for the, the GWAP area. That's our update on the, the GWAP Steering Committee, so as far as, uh, inter- uh, economic development.
Good. Even though we did, we didn't, uh, receive the enterprise zone designation, or I mean, one of the things you mentioned in the steering committee, there, there are other locally identified zones, for lack of a better term. You, you see any benefit for, uh, in us pursuing some type of designation or at least labeling, uh, an area or areas within, could be in Virginia County, but particularly in the GWAP area, uh, as some type of zone that has certain special characteristics or features or benefits or incentives or whatever? I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to give, talk about whether or not you could use another tool that, uh,
Right.
that, that we could have some control over locally.
Well, a technology zone is a tool, uh, most local communities overlay in certain areas, um, in commercial areas where they, uh, see growth or they wanna see, um, uh, re- rehabilitation take place. Uh, Caroline County put, did the whole county as a technology zone and it's only implemented when a zoning is changed for industrial commercial use, uh, or an existing industrial, uh, commercial zoning. Um, but referring to, uh, uh, the, I wanna say is the tourism zone, um, could that go over all the GWAP area? That's kind of where we'll have these discussions now. Um, that's a state incentive, obviously, supports tourism-related businesses. Um, one that I think would be really good, uh, for SubArea Four that we've discussed is, uh, the Defense Zone, uh, Department of Defense Zone. So, um, if any of the large agencies are looking to get outside more of the Beltway, um, you know, that could provide some extra incentives, uh, that could be paralleled with state incentives, uh, or, or some defense contractors, subcontractors that are looking for a new location. Um, and then there's also federal zones, uh, this, we should discuss shortly the Hub Zone. Um, I don't have the rest of my notes on, on the zones there, but, uh, yeah, uh, the tourism zone, uh, uh, go back to that, you know? We're talking about some natural space areas and, uh, where there's some recreation, uh, you know, there could be potential there. Uh, any type of, uh, recreational facilities, uh, could benefit off a tourism zone, et cetera.
Cause one of the things that's, that we're beginning now is, as Brian mentioned, is in the planning and zoning area, really trying to step back and, and, and look at the, the process that we would like to see for someone proposing a project. What, what, how would we like for that to roll out? Uh, to, to make it flexible, you know, timely, responsive to their needs and these kind of things. And it seems to me that, that is, you, you, the EDA and you need to be, uh, part of that discussion, uh, through your representatives, of, of course, uh, because that, that could, that could give you another bag of tools that you could use, uh, that would, you know, potentially make us attractive to
Certainly.
certain things, I mean, I, we're, we're almost starting with a, uh, with a greenfield here and have some flexibility, but we also have some challenges in that we don't have, you know, a, a lot of existing, uh, businesses to, to build from and build, build off of.
Right.
I think it's, uh, we've gotta be as creative and think of as many different avenues as we can to, to pursue this.
Certainly. Certainly.
Can I take a step back to your strategic plan? Uh, workforce.
Uh-huh.
Workforce development and, uh, it, it looks to me like you've got the standard kinds of things here. Uh, I mean, we're talking about, uh, uh, two new, uh, pad sites. We're trying to do some things, uh, in the GWAP area. Uh, how much is, from all your perspective, is this workforce, uh, gonna be, uh, a, a drag on what we want to try to do?
I, if you don't mind, I, I think it puts CTE back into the conversation. I mean, I think it really does, so, um, the workforce is a challenge for some of the existing businesses that we've, have been here for a period of time. And then the workforce is a problem for some of the new ones that we have, um, coming in, and you referenced a few, so, um, it, it's definitely gonna be part of, to Jim's point, it's gonna be part of a broader discussion of, we've got to have a well-educated workforce to fill some of these jobs.
I, I don't know where we stand in terms of, uh, our workforce availability relative to other areas. What concerns me is that we've got businesses that are trying to expand or trying to develop here and, and are having, uh, to pull teeth to find, uh, workers. Uh, that word will get around and pad sites won't make any difference, uh, if we don't have, uh, a viable and, and healthy workforce. Uh, and I'm just trying to think, uh, obvious the CTE is, is probably, uh, one of the steps we can actually do something about. But I just, any other thoughts on, uh, on where we might go with regard to, uh, workforce?
Do you folks have any feedback from the, uh, people that moved into Gordonville?
Into what?
Into Gordonville, the, uh.
Green application?
Yeah, I mean, he, uh, yeah.
It's an issue for him, right?
Yeah.
Well, uh, the other thing too is, uh, may want to have more interaction with Germana. They are very willing and have already worked with some businesses in the county. Where they will offer classes, class specific for businesses. They, they will actually go into a business and offer classes to their existing employees to move them up or if they're retooling, to train them in the new technology or whatever. But, um, they've, I've had some conversations and they would also be very willing to, if you find a group of applicants that don't possess the necessary skills of providing a company-specific course to train these people to move into those jobs, even though they do not currently possess those skills. So that may be another avenue to look at along with the Workforce Center, CTE.
And I would almost take it a step further, and we've discussed going to the high school. You know, again, you know, we're kind of in that gray area a little bit with age. Um, but there's a lot of young people looking for jobs that are only going to school maybe half the day. You know, so how can we start to, is it an internship? Is it part of the CTE program? But how can we start to move those people into there where some of our young people feel like they have to leave? You know, their home to find a job.
And, and some of those internships are available through the Workforce Center, uh, as well as what Germana does. So tying them all together a little bit better than what we have may be a, a, a great asset to us.
I, I think we, we really need to capture the, the high school age and prepare them to take jobs because we need them. Uh, because one of the things that's going on now, I hear from employers, not as much as I once did, basically when they need to hire, they have to steal from an existing employer in the county. That's their main source of employees. That's a heck of a reputation to have out there trying to market. And so we need to increase the numbers as well as the skills, but the numbers. Uh, and our best source of that right now is probably in, in the high schools, such that by the time they, uh, hit June of whatever year, they actually can already have some experience and, and move into a, a meaningful job. Not sure that we're doing as, as much as we need to do to prepare them to, to step into that role. And I, I see the, uh, the person in charge of, uh, the school operation here, so I, I, I say that partly looking past you guys. But we've had that conversation.
Right, but can I, is it okay my speech?
Please.
Okay, we had, uh, new delegate, Senator Reeves, last week come and visit the high school. And we sh- we specifically took them to our career tech classes. We didn't take them to the English and biology and things, but we took them to Hornet Technology. And they were so impressed because we already have four, uh, there were boys actually, that are into hot cyber security that have already been accepted to George Mason University for classes. Uh, we had another group over here that were already, um, classified and had licenses. So when they finished this year, they already have a license where they can go to work. The company that would hire it, if there was one here, wouldn't have to train them. They would already be trained.
Do we see our work-
And that's one of the big things that we, I think that we have. They were impressed with that and with, um, of course, the nursing program is very well-known because we feed through Germana and through Piedmont both.
Does the, uh, Workforce Center, uh, come to the school very often at all?
I don't know. I don't know.
I know the, uh, Germana has a person that works at both Germana and at the high school. And if we could, if we could get her tied in with the Workforce Center a little bit more, that may be very beneficial to everybody because, um, you know, you, we can find placement for the people with those skills as well as workforce could let you know what businesses are looking for because workforce is there both for businesses as well as people looking for employment. So that, that may be a really good.
Well, both the Senator and the delegate were very, very interested in the career tech. I mean, that was the biggest part of our conversation, the two hours that they were there. Uh, they were impressed with what we had and we talked to them about what we could do. Um, and, you know, we had a lot of conversation about money, but the biggest conversation we had was about career tech and what is needed, not just for Orange County, but this is kind of a statewide problem in rural areas.
Well, one, one of the things that we got at the VACO meeting is that, uh, in looking at what's needed for the future in education, twenty percent was degree, eighty percent was certification.
Yeah, sure.
And, and that's.
That's the tech.
And both of those programs come out with certification.
Right. Same way the chancellor of the, uh, community college system came around, uh, about a year ago looking for, you know, what, what businesses wanted, but he basically said the same thing. It's, they call it a ratio of one to seven, but, uh, yeah, basically that's it.
Well, the only, only other thing I can suggest is they still need to learn how to fill out an application and walk up, look you in the eye, shake your hand and ask for a job.
Soft skills.
Would you like to ask my son how he was taught that? And how you shake a hand and look somebody in the eye?
Well, he's doing, you, you must have done good.
Well, another way to think about this, I, I just went back to your list on page three of the target industries and, and it seems to me that we, we need to be developing programs to, to feed employees to anybody that we've targeted, uh, you know, whether it's transportation, logistics, manufacturing, or, or any of the others. I mean, that, the, the, our resources are limited enough that we need to be integrated uh, such that if, if, if this is where we're going or this is what we have in the way of existing clusters, there needs to be something starting at least at the high school level to, to feed those skills and abilities, in, including the skills to show up wearing shoes and, uh, and shake somebody's hand.
And on time.
And on time. And you have to report more than just Monday mornings. I mean, you know.
I think a lot of these students that I meet that are in the career and tech programs are taught that by their teachers. Now, if they're in, you know, other classes, maybe they're not taught that as much. And of course, there's not enough counselors to be able to do that and some of that should come from home. But I do think the teachers that we have anyway that are teaching career tech are teaching how you fill it out so it's readable and you look somebody in the eye and you shake their hand.
You know, I just, uh.
I don't always get those people. Some of them are the general student and, and the, somewhere along the line, they need that too because they still need a job.
Well, that was, uh, I, I've, I've talked to Tommy before about the green industries, uh, you know, difficulty in getting, getting staff. And so I'm just concerned that, uh, we need to probably, if we were, if, uh, we need, that's probably one of the high areas to work on, uh, and, uh, and so that we've got a labor force that people can, you know, they can go and hire as opposed to having to look for people outside the county.
Well, and, and the demographics of our labor force have always puzzled me. There, forgive me just, but for rounding the numbers, but roughly of the fourteen thousand, uh, workforce that live in Orange County, there's only about three thousand of them that both live here and work here. There's about nine thousand that leave, but there's about five thousand, almost six thousand that come into the county from other counties for work. And so we've got this inning and outing going on that, that is, adds to our difficulty, shall I say, it seems to me. I don't, I don't know how you address that.
It'd be interesting to analyze what kind of jobs those various people have.
Right, and.
And understand why that, why.
I, I, I actually think we have a lot to learn about our workforce and, and what the employee, employers need in terms of, of skills, like you were talking about, uh, as well as the skills to fit this list and anything else. I mean, I, I, I've felt for some time that that's an area that really needs some focus because we are, first of all, because we're small in terms of population. And so we need as, to get as much meaningful work and give as many opportunities to each person as we possibly can because we need them and our employers need them. So.
Quite actually, the majority of my employees come from Madison and Green.
They're part of that six thousand that, that come in. I mean, I, and that, there's nothing wrong with that inherently, but it makes me ask a series of questions.
We had statistics on that about a year ago. I, I don't remember the.
Yeah.
How, how it all shuffled out, but we, we did have that.
Well, I mean, if somebody says, uh.
We kind of designated the industry with these people.
Well, you're an employer. Do you see the same thing? I mean, think about your employees. Where, where are they from everywhere?
You, you ask. We should open up a truck driving school. So there isn't a person in this room that if you've got to move something, everybody needs a truck. So you could go down here to the Lee Industrial Park and take the challenging property and open up a school.
Mm-hmm. And there's a business that uses trucking company day in and day out.
You could probably clean up with Walmart or whatever. I hear them advertising on the radio every day, seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year to start out. So.
Yeah, we had a presentation just a, a few meetings ago from the Workforce Center here in Orange. They did a, a training to get people CDLs and I've forgotten the numbers now. But out of fifteen people that achieved the CDL, they, they had three and four job offers each by the time they got.
At fifty thousand plus.
So your point, yeah. Yeah, and a, and a really good salary. So.
The biggest issue with that though is they all become OTR and.
Well, if someone wanted to.
But, but those guys would love to stay.
They want money, they leave home, or they.
Those guys would love to stay home too.
Yeah, well, and that's the problem because, uh, like my company, they require one year minimum. Well, you can't get experience unless you go drive for the big companies. And it's like, I had one guy come in the other day and he, he wants to stay local. He's always worked local. Um, and he's got five job offerings. He can go anywhere he wants. But he'll be driving out to California and back all the time and it's like, you know, I have a family. Most of my drivers were OTR guys that went, I'll, I'll take a pay cut just so I don't have to do that.
The, uh, and I'm sure the lady back here can shed a lot more light on it than I can. An education has to be what a school offers and you got your reading, writing, arithmetic. And the rest of the stuff, uh, I don't know how much, i- if you pick green.
Applications.
Yeah, green applications. Okay, should we, three years ago, thought that we should be teaching people how to screen print? I don't think you're gonna see that. So you've got to get the, uh, the core basics and do that well so that you have somebody that's trained to, to adapt to whatever the jobs are gonna be.
Yeah, most employers will say, the specific skills, I'll teach them, but give me somebody.
That's kind of my point.
Who wants to learn, is prepared to learn, understands the basics and, and I can do the rest.
Right.
Somebody that can walk up to a CNC and, and number one, know what you're talking about.
The, the problem is not unique to this area at all.
No, no, no.
Um, and, and to that end, we could stand out if we had people, uh, that learned in school to do exactly what he said.
I mean.
Put your pants on straight, your hat on forward and.
The, the, the problem is, does the, the, does the state allow for that to go into the school curriculum?
I don't want it.
I think that's an, that's not a course. That's the teacher's intent.
Put your pants on straight.
I doubt it.
Could it be?
Teachers of quality would not probably like.
Could it be the ex- extracurricular?
Extracurricular. Okay, who'd do that?
Well, I just, I just threw that out as a, as an area. It, it appears to me to be something that we need to probably work on as much as we do some of the other more physical.
Most of the school systems have done away with the industrial arts programs. Is that probably the case here? I'm an industrial arts teacher, you know, that, that sucks. And it became too expensive to keep equipment.
To bring you back in the strategic plan here, um, this is always moving. Um, and it wasn't updated, but on the, the target industry list, you know, workforce was mentioned many times and the stakeholders and it's obviously a, a big topic. We're spending a lot of time talking on it. And, uh, one of the targets was higher education, um, and targeting community college, those schools that are for-profit schools, the ECPIs, the ITTT, ITT texts, et cetera. And maybe any European school models, uh, that may be of interest was, uh, all in discussion. So, um, you know, we recognize workforce is a very important issue and, uh, working with both Green and Aerojet, we made sure we brought in Germana, um, our Orange Workforce Center, um, our workforce investment board, uh, numerous other, uh, agencies. And, and it's not without all their help that they can find, you know, the, the, uh, the available employees that are out there.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't consider a pilot program to identify, and I don't know whether it's CDLs or, or just a, a case or two and, and see if we couldn't put together some type of, of an initiative or program, uh, working with the schools and, and the workforce, uh, board and, and existing employers, whatever the gang that needs to be involved with that and, and see if we couldn't, you know, develop, and Germanic, or develop a program that, uh, that would achieve some, some near-term results. I mean, I, I don't know how many young people are gonna graduate in June, uh, that want to go into the workforce. But it sure would be nice to capture some small subset of those and get them interested in, in a career path. Maybe not the ultimate career path, but at least a career path. I mean, I, I think that pays dividends. I don't have the first order clue how to do it, but.
Well, reaching out to existing businesses that you have in the community, um, and having, you know, with the frustration that some of the owners have, I think you'd see them be, being willing to speak, you know, to these young people and go, all right, tell me some of the questions you have about what I do and I'm gonna tell you what I expect. You know, so it's a dialogue back and forth, you know, and we go through, you know, we, we joke around, you know, some of the, the standard has come down, y- you know, spell your name correctly. I mean, the standard is, you know, show up on time, you know, deal brought up, ask for the job, y- you know, which is a, is a big deal. But have that conversation, you know, in, in a small group setting. I think you'd find a number of businesses be more than willing, you know, to ha- sit down and have a conversation with some young people.
Possibly career month instead of career day?
Absolutely.
Or a targeted career.
Can we make a suggestion? Uh, I think the board, uh, two years ago, gosh, a year and a half ago at the, at their strategic planning session talked about workforce. That certainly was, was an area of emphasis. And I think at that time, there was certainly interest on the board's part to, to better understand workforce development in, in Orange County and, and I had put out the idea of maybe a summit, uh, and I, I just, a convening, that's probably a better way of characterizing it, where we would bring all the decision makers, all those that are involved in workforce development, in some extension, the board, the Economic Development Authority, the school board, Germana, the Workforce Center, um, Piedmont, and, and just kind of come today, a structured day of trying to figure out because, you know, Tommy and I kind of live in this world and we see a lot of things going on, but one of it's a communication thing that. And we see a lot of things going on, but one of it's a communication thing, that you really need to know what the others are doing. Uh, before you can figure out whether there's a, areas of opportunity. And so the idea is just to get everybody together to kind of get a baseline education of what, what, what is going on. And if there's areas of opportunities, and certainly the board, um, with resourcing this, I mean, funding. And, and, and maybe identifying some pilot initiative that makes some sense, given the, who, who's out there. Then that may be something we wanna think about, is maybe in the spring, let's get by this budget cycle and, and, and maybe get everybody together in a, in kind of a structured half-day thing. Or, or work out where we can get everybody together to, to get better educated.
That'd be an excellent idea.
Yeah, I like that, I like that.
Okay, so maybe that's something we can, we can work on, uh, and, uh, my, my, my friend, Dr. Tanner, will be front and center, uh, on this, as well as Dr. Sam, so. Good, well, why don't we take that on as maybe an idea for the spring?
Did you have any more thing, any more topics?
That was it?
Is there anything that any of you'd like to bring up? I know that the hour is getting later, but, uh, any questions?
I expressed, I expressed in our meeting before we closed, just with the GWAP and the things that it is very, uh. It's nice to see things at least in motion and a continuous, uh, continuation of what has been started. It has not been dropped by the wayside, and, and, uh, it's nice for the administrative side, and from this board side, and the EDA, and everybody, uh, working together. Uh, for somewhat of a foreseeable goal, no matter how far off it is, at least we're, we're making progress, uh, just proud to be a part of that.
Good, thank you.
Chairman, I just also, kind of picking up on the theme, I, I wanted to take the opportunity. Um, if you recall, Tommy Kane was newly minted, I think, about this time last year, and the EDA was, was, was kind of coalescing. And I've, I've been impressed the way that the EDAs worked, uh, together with Tommy, and, and sort of now with Rose on the board. And, and I think you're starting to see the fruits of that labor, frankly. And, uh, um, I, you know, just by the activity, uh, I saw you in another closed session on a prospective business, so, uh, you know, Tommy, I think, uh, county attorney put out. That he needs to get a Chick-fil-A in here as his next, uh.
I can't believe that's coming out of the attorney's mouth.
But I, I just, as, you know, just as an observer in this, I think the EDA, Tommy and Rose, and everybody's kind of absolutely rolling in the right direction. I mean, they're very, being very supportive of the GWAP's, uh, overall, I guess, guidance and strategy for the county.
Well, one of the things that I heard, and I had the occasion to talk to quite a few people, standing on their doorstep over the past couple of months. And one of the things that I heard that, that actually made me feel good is that there, there's a recognition, not by everyone, by a significant percentage of the, uh, citizens out there. That the, the, the collaboration between this board, the EDA, the planning commission, the school board, is something that's beginning to be recognized. And, 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 and the value in that collaboration is beginning to be recognized. Not, not always do they understand how all the pieces fit together necessarily, but, but they like the sound of it. And, and from the inside perspective, uh, there's more than just sound, I think there's, there's a real, and the steering committee for GWAP, I think, is a good example. Where the, the, we, we are all in this together, and, uh, we can, we can actually get some things done, I think, as, you know, as a collection of, uh, of talent and, and energy. So, uh, I, I, I think that we are on a, on a good track, you know, both within the individual bodies, but, uh, a- as a, as a broader group. So, uh, I, I, I encourage you, and, and I encourage us, to stay the course here. I mean, there'll be bumps and bruises along the way, uh.
Was interesting, uh, one of the comments at the VACO corp, uh, conference was that the federal's been so polarized that they're dysfunctional. The states are becoming that way. The only part of government that seems to work these days is the localities. So let's see if we can't continue, uh, to, to maintain that kind of a model.
One point, we didn't have a Chick-fil-A discussion, but for Tom, Tom benefited, it was, uh, Cracker Barrel.
All right. Anything else? I would entertain a motion, some new second. All in favor, adjourned.